Well, good evening. It is six thirty PM on Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. I'll call the Northern Lebanon School District Board meeting to order. Director Murray, would you like to lead us, please, in the pledge and silence?
Send a flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And a moment of silence? Thank you. Maybe seated?
Thank you, Director Murray. Ms. Hartman, can you take the roll, please?
Director Bilal?
Present.
Director England?
Here.
Director Fowler?
Present.
Director Klein?
Present.
Director Kreiser?
Present.
Director Moyer?
Here.
Director Murray?
Present.
Vice President Williams?
Here.
President Nam? Eight present, one absent.
Thank you.
Okay, so we went last week at our committee meeting, we went through the agenda, so I would like, I'll entertain a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
We have a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Director Moyer. Seeing that there's a first and a second, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate with an aye or a yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Presentations, Director, Dr. Messinger?
We're gonna quickly talk about the high school students of the month, and then we're gonna recognize everybody in a minute, but the high school students of the month for May are Kiara Bowman and Adriana Raber. This award is sponsored jointly by the Fredericksburg and Jonestown Lions Club. The middle school student of the month for May is Colton Brum. This is awarded, this award is by the Northern Lebanon County Rotary Club, and they do recognize each recipient at a future meeting of the Rotary Club. We are now going to recognize all, I think quite a few of them made it, of the students of the month from, throughout the year. What we'll do is, Dr. Ebert is going to call your names, we're gonna start, I think, at the beginning of the year, September. Director Williams, I'm gonna, I'm going to give Director Williams your plaque, he's going to hand it to you. We're gonna ask that you pause for a second while you're shaking his hand, and we're gonna get a quick picture, and then if you would stage over here until everyone is through, and then we're gonna get a big group picture of everybody, and then we'll go from there. So, give us one second to get around here.
This is one of the beginning parts of the week where I have the most honor as a principal. We end up having a lot of celebrations this week. The first is gonna be the students of the month, and then we have the middle school awards tomorrow night, and then Thursday we have the high school awards, so I'll be seeing many of you back here, at least over in the auditorium on Thursday. To get into this, we're gonna start going down for September, the students of the month, or Megan Baumgartner? The other student of the month is Russell Beers, and I believe he could not attend tonight, I don't see him in the crowd. So, as many of you know, the students of the month are very busy individuals, and they're involved in many, many activities, so some of them unfortunately could not make it tonight. For the month of October, we have Madison Brewer. And the other student for October is Jade Casperwitz. For the month of November, we have Benjamin Clemmer. And Ethan Hughes. For the month of December, we have Alexandria Spangler. And Carter Kubica. For the month of January, we have Hannah England. And McKenna McLean. For the month of February, we have Leon Sherk. And Hunter Shirovsky. For the month of March, we have Carter Adams, who I believe was unable to make it tonight. And then Vincent Battaselli. For the month of April, we have Hayden Adams. And Taylor Booker. And finally, for the month of May, we have Kiara Bowman. And the last student was Adriana Raber, but she was unable to make it tonight.
Yep, Carter. The next item is our student board representative, Carter?
All right, so this will be my, my last board meeting here for Northern Lebanon, pretty sad. For next year's student council officers, the president will be Olivia Hansel, and the vice president is gonna be Elena Lauver. And for this next fall's homecoming, the planned date for it is be, is to be October eleventh. So, that's it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Carter. So, the next item is superintendent report, Dr. Messinger?
You, do you have anything beyond, you have some things at the budget, when we get to the budget. Do you have anything else that you wanted to hit on? Okay. Any construction?
Well, I just think the community will be very pleased that the days that we were virtual in the secondary went well. The electrical work that was slated to be done was done as scheduled, and they were able to transition some of the equipment that needed the higher voltage over on Friday, as expected. So, that, that went well for us. As you know, you approved the bid for asbestos abatement in the existing areas of the building, and that work is being scheduled as we speak. And then, of course, we're still working through the builder's risk claim that we had from a few months ago. And that's a lot of back and forth and a lot of conversations with contractors and insurance company about what is and what isn't covered, so it's a little bit of time-consuming work, but we're getting through it.
Okay, and the rest of my report, we have two of our Spanish teachers, are you combining tonight? Oh, it's just now, okay. Senora Snyder is going to be showing us and talking to us a little bit about the Costa Rica trip.
Buenos dias. Tonight I have the honor of sharing with you a snapshot of our recent trip to Costa Rica. I'm proud to report that our group of NL students represented our school, our community, and our nation exceptionally well. Our guide shared that he sincerely enjoyed getting to know our students, and that he appreciated their attentiveness, inquisitiveness, and fully engaged participation. The trip was packed with cultural learning, new experiences, new friendships, life lessons, and adventures. I'd like to acknowledge and thank my fellow chaperones, Adam Molinaro, Gary Bouchette, Kristy Demakowitz, Trish Schaefer Book, and Rhonda Sowers, who tirelessly supported and encouraged our students and me. We offer our sincere gratitude to the school board for recognizing the value of experiential learning and travel. Before I share a video montage of our tour, I'd like to read you a few journal entries that were written by students on the trip. It was cool to put my Spanish to the test and learn new things. Some of the words they say in Costa Rica are different than what we've learned. I ordered ice cream in Spanish, talked to our guide, asked for spoons, and had other conversations. I also spoke lots of Spanish at the school. The school was two main classrooms with different grades. At our school, we have so many rooms for just one grade. I'm grateful for air conditioning and just overall my school, it changed my perspective. My favorite moment was teaching one boy at the school to paint. He just wanted to do what we were doing, I got to use my Spanish a lot and give back to someone. It was really special to me, I never get the chance to give and help, so I really enjoyed it. The sights were absolutely breathtaking, it was a very busy trip, but definitely worth the experience. This will be something I take with me for the rest of my life. I was shocked by how simple and beautiful life in Costa Rica is, I felt so relaxed and happy, not consumed by my academics or the stress of my future. This break allowed me time to recharge and rejuvenate while also thinking about what I want in life. This trip was an amazing reminder that it's so important to stay grounded and make sure that I'm doing things that make me happy. I like how I was able to get out of my shell and talk to all these fun people. I'm usually pretty introverted, but throughout this trip, I've been socializing a lot. It made me feel good that I can talk to these people instead of being so quiet all the time. I'm like one hundred percent sure that I want to visit other parts of the world. I love how traveling can make people closer and more interactive. My favorite moment was on the beach playing soccer with a Costa Rican boy. It was so memorable because I was able to talk with him for a whole hour only in Spanish. It was very cool to hear firsthand how life is in Costa Rica. We did so much in the days we were in Costa Rica, and we just learned so much. On this trip, I was able to make new friends and to realize that life is so much more than being on our phones all the time. This was my first time on a plane or out of the country, and the world feels bigger now. I want to travel everywhere and learn about the whole world. I feel pura vida in my heart now, and I know it's more an attitude than a phrase. This trip exceeded my expectations. I loved being part of the culture and seeing new things. I'm on the plane, and I want it to turn around. So, we're gonna watch a, a video of our activities, and this was put together by Ben Clemmer, who finished at one thirty this afternoon, so I hope it's good. On March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, forty-two students and six teachers traveled to Costa Rica for a nine-day educational tour. After a layover in Miami, the group arrived in San Jose and met our amazing guide Guillermo and our very skilled bus driver Freddie. Our first stop was the Brick Coffee Company, where we learned about how coffee is grown, harvested, and prepared.
On day two, we rode to Arinal with a stop along the way to sample a variety of tropical fruits and shop for locally-made snacks. After lunch, we visited a small rural school called Esuela Agua Azul, where we met local students and learned about what school is like in Costa Rica. We read books together in Spanish that were packed from home, and those books were later donated to the school library. We spent the afternoon playing games together, chatting in Spanish, and painting a patio area as a service to the school. In the evening, we explored the Baldi Hot Springs, which are heated by waters flowing near the Arinal volcano. Some students braved the water slides while others relaxed in the many pools around the property.
The following day, we hiked down a mountain to the base of the La Fortuna waterfall, where we swam in the cool waters and watched blue morphed butterflies glide overhead. The five hundred steps down and back up were well worth the views. Next, we traveled to a local sustainable farm to learn how cacao is grown and made into chocolate. We all got to help in the process, and we even made our own custom chocolate mixture to sample. We enjoyed a delicious, fresh meal at the farm. In the afternoon, we kayaked on Lake Arinal, and we cooled off with a swim in the lake, with a clear view of the volcano as a backdrop. In the evening, our guide Guillermo surprised us with a Latin dance lesson, where we all learned some new moves while laughing and twirling around the dance floor together.
Day four started with a vigorous hike at the base of the Arinal volcano on an old lava flow trail. The group spotted a band of quaddies on a variety of other unique birds, insects, and plants along the way. Then we boarded the bus to travel to Monte Verde, stopping along the way for lunch at a restaurant with an amazing lakeside view. The long ride showcased the area's beautiful scenery, and in the evening, we arrived in the town of Santa Alena, surrounded by the Costa Rica cloud forest.
On the next day, we traversed the Santa Alena Reserve, one of the world's densest zones for biodiversity. Near the end of the walk, we climbed a lookout tower to enjoy sweeping views of the cloud forest. Then we strapped on our harnesses for a ziplining adventure through the trees, with many stepping outside their comfort zones for the thrill of flying over the canopy. In the evening, we strolled through the streets of Santa Alena and relaxed at our hotel.
On day six, we traveled to the Pacific coast with a sighting of hollow monkeys along the way. We enjoyed an aerial tram ride, which took us high up a mountain for a bird's eye view of the region's diverse plant life. We also got to walk through a butterfly enclosure and learn from local guides. We continued our journey to the coast with a stop in the town of Haco for some pops ice cream, and we arrived at the coast just in time for a sunset walk along the shore of the Pacific Ocean.
The next day, we visited the much anticipated Manuel Antonio National Park. On the walk to the beach, we saw sloths and iguanas, and we had an up-close encounter with a troop of white-faced capuchin monkeys. We enjoyed swimming in the warm Pacific waters, finding sand dollars and hermit crabs, and trying not to get burned by the sun. In the afternoon, we relaxed by the hotel pool, played games, and worked on homework. And in the evening, we returned to the beach for one last Pacific sunset.
On our last full day in Costa Rica, we took a boat tour down the Tarkalas River, where we spotted many different bird species, as well as iguanas, basilisk, lizards, a raccoon, and lots of crocodiles. One crocodile that we saw is eighty-five years old and weighs over twelve hundred pounds. Then we visited the town of Sarchi, known for its intricate and colorful painting styles. We watched a few artists at work and shopped for souvenirs before returning to the capital city of San Jose. Our favorite souvenirs, however, are the moments that we can still clearly see as we reflect on our travels. We will treasure the friendships that we have formed and strengthened. We will be grateful for the comforts we enjoy at home and for the opportunities we have been given. We will see the world with a wider lens, we will celebrate the diversity of other cultures.
We will celebrate the diversity of other cultures and languages. We will do our best to care for the planet, and we will keep exploring. The beauty of Costa Rica, the laughter and carefree days, and the grand adventures that we experienced are impossible to put into words, but there may be one phrase that can encapsulate it all: pura vida.
Looked like a great trip, and when are you going again? You're still recovering, okay. Well, thank you for being willing to give up your time to do that. I know it's a sacrifice, but I'm sure it's an experience that even the teachers don't ever forget either, so. As far as any, for me, just a reminder, we have one board meeting in June, it's June 3rd, and two nights later, we have graduation, believe it or not. We are vastly approaching the end of the year, so you've probably noticed on your tables, everyone has their caps and gowns for that event, and we'll have more details for you, but that is coming quickly, so that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Messinger. We'll give them a moment. Next item on the agenda is public content or public comment. Interested persons were asked to complete a written request to address the board from prior to the public session. These individuals will be acknowledged by the board president. Do we have any public comment tonight? So there's no public comment tonight, so we'll move on to item number six, items for board action. It should be noted that public notice was given for this meeting in accordance with Act 84 of 1986. By notice of the president, the following action requires a voice vote. All votes in favor shall be stated with an "aye" or "yes." All votes opposed shall be stated with a "nay" or "no." All members abstaining shall state "I abstain" when prompted. The votes will be recorded in the minutes as a unanimous roll call vote unless there are any votes in opposition or abstention. If necessary, the president may subsequently call for a roll call vote to be recorded in the minutes. First item is the approval of our consent agenda. These are the items that we discussed last week and agreed to place on our consent agenda, so I will entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda 7.1 to 7.21 as presented.
Thank you, Director Murray. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Director Moyer. Are there any discussions, questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please, all in favor of approving our consent agenda, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes."
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? My vote is also a yes, the motion carries. Thank you. 8.1. So next item on the agenda is 8.1, the coaches, Dr. Messinger?
I'll go through human resources, there's only three items. Yes, most of these are assistant coaches, and a winner, bowling coach, head coach is listed there as well. That's going to complete the majority. There'll be a few stragglers, but the majority of our assistant coaches for each of the sports for the upcoming fall and even into the winter season. We do have one mentor for a long-term substitute that is listed there for a geometry position. And then it is time also to appoint our board secretary. Our board secretary is a four-year appointment, and was covering the last year of Mrs. Martin's term, and that expires this June, so beginning July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2029, that would be the four-year term for the stipend of $4,200. Are there questions on any of those?
Hearing none, are there any objections to grouping all of these into one motion? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve items 8.1, 8.2, and 8.3.
Move to approve 8.1, 8.2, and 8.3.
Thank you, Director England, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Blau. Are there any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes."
Aye.
Yes.
Are there any opposed? My vote is also a yes, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to number, item nine, instructional approvals. Dr. Messinger?
Yes, this is actually our list of advisors and co-curricular folks for next year, both the secondary and the elementary level, class advisors, club advisors, and so on. That is the majority of the list. I think there might be an open position here and there that we're still looking for coverage, but the majority of the list for the next school year. 9.2, 9.2 is our list of seniors that will be graduating this June. Hopefully, as many of them as possible will be attending graduation, but that is our list of seniors that we need to approve every year. I know there's a few board members with seniors this year. I have a senior this year, so we're very much, I can't speak for them. I'm very much looking forward to kicking him out. 9.3 is, we talked about these books in the previous month, they were on display in the office. They are the two books that were written. It's about HVAC service and plumbing, written for kids, that we're going to add to our third-grade career choices when we talk about kids. Really cool books, if you hadn't had a chance to see them, I think they're in my office now, but they were out front, I can grab one at the end if you would like, but I think a lot of you took a chance, opportunity to look at them when we had them out a month ago. So, two neat books that I think will be nice for third graders. And then finally, and certainly, there's a lot of these, these are the revised curriculum. These are ones that we've had in the past. Some of the revisions are very, very small, some of them are just some cleanup on things. There's not a great deal of things that are different on these. There were five new courses. Those five new courses were removed. Those five new courses, I don't know off the top of my head if I remember, went all five where I sent them in an email. Those will be on for June, just to give you a little more time to look at those because they're new. But if you have any questions on any of these revisions, or if you just saw one that you'd like a little more time, we can move that back as well, but those are listed there after we had them on last week, and that's the end of nine.
Are there any questions for Dr. Messinger, specifically to the curriculum? I know there was some discussion last week, but as Dr. Messinger mentioned, we did move all of these curriculum that's on the agenda for tonight are revised, so if there's any questions. Are there any objections to grouping 9.1, 2, 3, and 4 into one motion? No, okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve items 9.1, 9.2, 9.3, and 9.4.
Motion to approve 9.1 for 9.4.
Thank you, Director Murray, is there a second? Thank you, Director England, any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes."
Aye.
Any opposed? My vote is also a yes, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Move on to 10.1.
All right, I'll do this one by itself. It is the budget. It would be approved tonight, and then the final approval would be in June. I think we've gone through it many, many times, but there was some new information that came in just in the last week or so that we did want to share with you, just to give you a little bit of an impact on the 2.75, which was what the board's directive was for the budget. And Ms. Martin got some information about the relief, the homestead.
Yep, the homestead, farmstead relief, which there will be a resolution that we will be approving, that will need to be approved in June for this to go through and accept the money from the state, but the state did increase the funding that they will send to Northern Lebanon School District for relief to our taxpayers. So we got a little over 1.2 million this year that will be coming in for the '25, '26 tax year. And what I did on this chart up here, I just wanted to show you at 2.75%, three different home assessed values, what the taxes would have been in '24, '25 versus '25, '26. As you can see in that third line, then, that is the real estate tax increase for each of those homes, and then the increase in the homestead relief as well. So homeowners for this current tax year, '24, '25, received $209 reduction in their billing, and for next year, they will be receiving $244 reduction in their billing because of the Homestead Relief Act, and that's the difference there, is that 3428. It doesn't matter what your assessed value of your home is, everyone gets the same amount, unless, of course, they're underneath, you don't get a refund. So there are 146 homes in our school district who do not have to pay taxes, and we don't give them the extra, that money kind of goes back into the pot and adds into everybody else's, and takes me a little while to calculate that, but that is the difference then there between the two for the impact for the year. So if you had $100,000 assessed value home, your increase for the year between the two then would be $13.55, is what you'll be paying additional in taxes for the year. So $13.55 will be the increase in your taxes that you will feel out of your pocket for the '25, '26 year. So I just wanted to show you guys that as it goes along with the budget. If there are any questions on that, let me know, but you will see a resolution, it's a one-page attachment that will be on the agenda next month. We typically approve it with our budget.
So that, in addition to the, we got out word to our senior citizens at the senior citizen breakfast, as well as the, there's information in each bill.
Yes.
About the...
Each person who receives a real estate tax bill in the mail will also have a whole extra sheet in with it detailing the relief that they can get through the state.
Right, so hopefully, between the increase in homestead and that additional information, people will, certainly, this one is fairly easy, you just have to apply for the homestead, but maybe the other one, hopefully, people will take advantage of that, and the increased information will be valuable, so. Questions for Ms. Martin?
So the adoption of the proposed final budget, which will establish the total expenditures and appropriations of the general fund in the amount of $53,191,057 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026. There was published notice of the proposed budget and its availability for public inspection. We did provide the current tax revenue from local sources to support the budget, and the mileage tax rate will be 17.8250 on the real estate under the authority of Section 672 of the Pennsylvania School Code. Expenditures and appropriations of the budget will also include scheduled salary increases for the members of the professional employee bargaining unit, as prescribed in the current bargaining agreement, and should also include compensation increases for the administrative, supervisory, and classified personnel. It's also worth noting that the per capita tax under the authority of Section 679, also known as the nuisance tax, and the per capita tax under the authority of the Section 511 of 1965 are set at $0 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve item 10.1, the proposed final budget.
Motion to approve 10.1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion and a second, is there any discussion, comments? Since it is the budget, we'll just do a roll call vote, make it simple for everyone, so Ms. Hartman, can you do a roll call vote, please, on item 10.1?
Director Kreiser?
Aye.
Director Moyer?
Yes.
Director Fowler?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Director Blau? Director Murray?
Yes.
Director Klein?
Yes.
Director England?
Yes.
And President Nam is absent. All in favor?
All right, so motion passes unanimously, thank you. Dr. Messinger, you want to take us into 10.2?
Yeah, 10.2 is contract for rehabilitation services, physical therapy, occupational therapy for the upcoming school year as needed. That agreement is attached for you.
Are there any questions for Dr. Messinger regarding 10.2? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve item 10.2.
Motion to approve item 10.2.
Thank you, Director Blau, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Kreiser. Having a first, having a motion and a second, is there any discussion on item 10.2, Klein's questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes." Any opposed? My vote is also a yes, the motion carries unanimously. Item, now we are into our informational portion of the agenda. So, policy 237, the electronic devices.
Just to clarify, the next two policies are the two policies we talked about last time. We will be meeting in two, not this Friday, but next Friday, to put a bow on those two policies and then have them for you for June. So if there's any suggestions, comments, questions, you're welcome to bring it up tonight, or if you want us to take a look at something while we're finalizing those, and you see it later on, shoot me an email so we can discuss it when, hopefully, Director Kreiser can be there and Director Nam is usually there as well, so, and then we'll have them on for June. I have not been contacted at this point after last week's meeting yet with any questions from anyone, but you may have gotten some, so feel free to reach out, or if there's anything that anybody saw, we can add that to our list tonight, too.
Is there any update from the bus? I didn't see...
Not yet, we had a couple people that are, I am going to task Mrs. Low and Dr. McInerney, who have been dealing the most with, but there's been some out of the office with professional development and some vacation stuff, so we'll get to them this week, yep.
No problem.
Any other questions regarding the policies?
Is next Friday open to anyone to this process?
I believe, I believe that's the, you were referring to the policy committee, or the...
Director Nam, Director Kreiser usually, and then Dr. Reese is usually there, I'm usually there, and Ms. Martin's usually there.
Okay, so...
Does that have any questions?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
And that's in two weeks?
Not this Friday, but next Friday.
Any other questions? Okay. Item 11.3 is the voting delegate for the PSBA Delegate Assembly. Delegate Assembly is scheduled for October 21st. I am going to let our esteemed president, Barry Nam, either appoint or call for a vote for those delegates at next month's meeting, unless there's someone here today that really wants to be part of that. If not, I'm sure Director Nam will be in touch with some folks to see if he can have someone volunteer for that, and so that, but we don't need to make a vote or approve that until next month anyways.
No, I can put that on for next month, too.
So moving on to our reports, Lebanon County Career Technology Center, Director Murray? I mean, I'm sorry, Director Klein?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report, thank you. Legislative liaison, Director Kreiser?
Yep, just one thing to report that I thought was kind of interesting, it was a court case out of... It was a court case out of Erie County that was resolved, I think, just this week. It happened to, from, it was left over from the COVID era, where a group of parents had brought a court case to try to oust school board members for enforcing state health mandates. And the court ruled in favor of the school board, saying that school boards per PA code have broad jurisdiction over enforcing health and safety in their schools. And if the parents had an issue with school board members, that that should be handled through our voting and ballot processes.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Director Kreiser. IU 13, Director Murray?
No report, thank you.
Change order committee, Director Fowler?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. So we also have the dates to remember. Quite a few things coming up as far as awards programs and such. And also graduation is coming up very shortly. And then our next scheduled board meeting is June 5th, correct?
I think it's the 3rd, graduation's the 5th. Did I mix that up earlier?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. June 3rd is.
So our next, our next board meeting is June 3rd, and there will only be one meeting in the month of June, and then we have graduation on the 5th. Any other items for the good of the order?
Looking forward to July. We have no meetings in July.
As a, I will try to avoid July if at all possible. The only foreseeable reason I can think of would be a construction issue.
I like that you've been very consistent with no report. I like that from change order. I don't want change. I don't like change.
Well, that just means construction is going as planned if there's no change orders, right?
Would be any more tours. Oh, yeah, any more, any more tours of the construction?
Yeah, we can, we can do a tour. Yeah, yeah, we should do it then. Yeah, we'll talk and get a time. That'd be great.
Okay, there be no further business or action to part of this meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director England for the motion. Thank you, Director Blau for the second. Any discussions? All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please indicate with an aye or a yes. Any opposed? Thank you very much for a good meeting and good night. Meeting adjourned.
Hey, Dave. You just asked me if we took.
There's legislation that's pending now. They're going to try to make.
There's a bill coming, there's a bill coming, there's the legislation now.